Down there, that's the driveway, don't?
That's the driveway, yeah. You know, it'll-
That's not, but that's not drawn correctly.
Yeah, that's not what's on the plan.
Because that's coming south. If this is the, if this is the west elevation of the building, that driveway is heading south. Which is what I was saying, take it around and go around the building, just like that. Because everything to the right there is not really accurate.
I'll have to look at it. I mean, with this is-
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the one I was referring to when I said that before, before you showed me the site plan, but.
Well, that would take, if you could do that, that would take all this pavement in front of it and move it to the back. So you wouldn't see it, right? You might have to-
Yeah, just like if all that was blacktop, how you've been out in front, you could turn around there.
Uh, yeah, but I'm saying if they, if it could, if this could be remassed or moved such that you get it in the back, then the, all the drives and all the impervious surfaces in the back of the building, this could be all landscaped or something. Right?
Yeah, I mean, because it's saying here, proposed view from Leewood, right? I mean, that's all out in front of the building on a north elevation. Facing a golf course.
Yes.
Right. Is there enough radius in the back or?
Well, you know.
I really don't think so. Um. I mean, that's this, we're back on the site plan here.
You're also, you have two single family homes adjacent to that property line.
Oh, in the back right there.
They're very close.
Yeah. Good for Leewood, it's not good for them. Yep. Yeah, that'd be a problem. Okay, so could you just go back to the renderings? Because I just want to get comfortable with that. Yeah, so. Can we see the one from street level or this, yeah, yeah, it's good.
Obviously, you know, we talked the last meeting, I think there'll be some changes to the building based on comments.
Yeah, I'm not really looking into building, I'm just looking at how the drive aisle is there and what it looks like. Right, because I'm, I would just like to reduce the size there as much as possible, because as you sort of shot yourself in the foot here, there's just like lots of drive, I don't even think the driveway on the plan is anywhere near this big. And that's, that's 20 feet.
And did you commit to the grasscrete pavers? And can you use those and still support the fire truck or?
I think we were looking at concrete pavers.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to the grass pavers.
Okay.
And why is that for maintenance or?
Uh, you know, a preference, I mean, we can talk about that, we're certainly open to it. Um. Grass pavers over time, I'm, I'm not particularly fond of them, but. But, you know, they, they do work, they, you know, in the winter, in, in northern areas, that maybe there's more problems with them because of heaving. Uh, if you know, if your drainage starts to fail underneath, you could have problems, so.
Uh, I'd be, I think it's sort of, um, not dolls down, but sort of makes this less jump out at you.
Yeah. We could definitely consider that, we, we, we're talking paver, so.
Okay. That's good. All right, so I think we've seen site issues and discussed them. Does the board want to continue discussing the site issues or do we feel that we have enough to continue moving forward? I mean, I would certainly like to know what the driveway looks like if you can make it smaller such as we've discussed. I don't think that's an issue that's going to hold me up from saying anything else here. Just because we have enough time to address that, and I'm sure you would.
Sure.
Guys, you see anything else that's going, needs to be addressed at this time?
Basically, that's what I was looking for, it's the actual, you know, rendering of, you know, what it really looks like, which is driveway and all. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, and to reiterate my earlier comment, uh, I just want some sort of examination into whether there are any, uh, smaller options in terms of, uh, a truck that would admittedly require, um, a, a more frequent delivery, but, uh, again, if we're talking once a month instead of once every other month, I don't think that, uh, that necessarily is a major imposition. And if, if there are other, um, plausible options here, what effect would that have on, uh, perhaps, um, what, what effect would it have on the site plan, uh, and on the driveway in particular? Could you, uh, would you need, uh, to have a driveway that, that went from Leewood to Dale? Or could you have, uh, a smaller truck entering and exiting at the same Leewood Road site as you have now? So, uh, I, I'd like that issue to be, um, explored, uh, and, and an answer, um, provided to the board.
We will do that.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, um, just a, just a thought. Um, I know, you know, the board is concerned with this, the massing and the size of the pavement for the driveway. I believe, I'd have to confirm, but I believe town code would allow a single drive for parking less than, I think it's 30 spaces, a width of 12 feet. But the fire department would likely require a minimum width of 20 feet for a fire access road. And then there's other requirements for where they can set up the rig in relation to the building and setbacks, so that may very well dictate the driveway width. But there might be a, um, maybe the applicant can consider a, some type of middle of the road solution where maybe 12 or 15 foot width of the drive is concrete pavers or whatever it may be. Uh, and then the balance could be some sort of, you know, grass paper or some alternative means so that visually it doesn't have the the look that everything in the front of the building's been paved with some hard surface. But it'll provide the, the structural, uh, stability for vehicle traffic.
Sure, that's a good point. Okay. So. I, I think. I think I'd like to see some of the suggestions put forth before we move forward on this. I mean, I think we're all very much concerned with the aesthetics here and the impact of the drive, the drive lane on what it looks like from Leewood. And plus, as Mr. Nevesek brought up, if the use of a smaller truck could help reconfigure this, we should probably address it now. And if it's not, if it doesn't really change anything, then we'll know. But I think we're asking that we expect, get explored a little bit.
Chair, if I, if I may just add a comment, if it's okay?
Of course.
Point. So, yeah, I mean, in ter- in terms of those issues that with respect to the truck, um, we, we will look into that, but, you know, from what, most of what I'm hearing are, I guess, indeed side elements. It's like, and we can always look at those, because we have to come back to you obviously for senior preliminary and obviously for final site plan. Uh, but it just in terms of, um, having this, this project continue moving forward, uh, you know, we would like to be able to hopefully get on to the zoning boards and continue that there, uh, because, you know, given the time constraints that we have, and if you recall at the last meeting, I mentioned, you know, we have certain regulatory timeframes that we have to get this done by, so we're just trying to, again, all these sites, all these issues we're going to address with you, it's just a question of hopefully we, and can hopefully get a, a nega- negative declaration this evening to at least allow us to proceed to the zoning board, knowing that we have to come back and address these site plan elements with you. Um, and just while, while you were discussing, also, I was checking with my clients, uh, we're texting back and forth just to get some answers, but with respect to the truck, uh, and again, we'll confirm this, but my understanding is that the salt truck that they use is the same truck, so it, it's sometimes they use less quantity, sometimes more, but my understanding is that the truck is going to be the same type of truck. Again, I'm going to have to confirm that because that's something I received via text, but I have to confirm it, but that's what the client's telling me, uh, who, who knows the, the protocols with the trucks, so at least the, the size of the truck is the same regardless, it's just less, they, they load it, um, depending on the capacity, with, with respect to the facility that they go to. So again, we'll confirm that, but that's what I'm getting, uh, right now. So just again, to go back, you know, we would hopefully, we'll address these site plan elements and, but we just like to keep this process moving forward if we can.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Margaret, is, is there a zoning board meeting, uh, between now and our next meeting?
Uh, yes, so the, um, ARB is meeting on July 7th, which is a Tuesday, then the zoning board is meeting July 14th, which is a Tuesday, and then you're meeting the following Tuesday, July 21st. And, and one thing I would say about the, the driveway, um, and trying to reduce the width, et cetera. One of the proposed variances is with regard to impervious surfaces, so I, I think when you, if you were to refer this to the zoning board, you could ask them to ask the applicant to try to minimize the impervious surface to the maximum extent possible, because that's what they're supposed to do anyway. But, um, you could, you know, make them aware that that was a specific concern that you have.
Yeah, and by the way, on, on that, on that truck issue again, and I know you, the applicant's, uh, texting back and forth, um.
We're trying.
Yeah, trying, uh, and, and I understand, I understand what we're asking you, what I'm asking you in particular to do is, is, is not the most convenient for you. Um, uh, you know, you, you would just, you would, I would assume you're preferring, I, I wish this guy wouldn't be such a, a, a pain.
No, not at all.
We've got this, uh, and, and certainly is more convenient for you to use that, but, uh, you know, i- if there is another truck that's available, and I don't know who makes the deliveries, and whether there's only one outfit that makes this type of delivery and they only have one truck. Um, but, but, uh, you know, I, I, I do want you to use a little imagination here and find out, i- is it plausible? Because, and, you know, it, look, ultimately, if you can find a smaller truck and that smaller truck has no effect whatsoever on, on the site plan, well, it really doesn't, you know, i- i- it doesn't produce anything useful for us. But if, as I suspect, if there is another truck, a smaller truck, I would think that, 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 that should see its way into some, um, scaling back at least of the impervious surfaces. Uh, I, I haven't heard a lot of, I, I, I know this is a big, certainly a much larger building, but I think at, at the last, uh, hearing, we heard about the reasons why, uh, there, there's a lot more being done here, there's, there's, um, uh, you, you have to store certain, uh, you know, chemicals and, and the like. There, there's a reason behind it, and I haven't heard a lot of pushback from this board about the, the, the size of the, uh, the, the massing of the building. Um, it's, it's a lot bigger than what's there right now, but I, I think that's inevitable, given the, the reason why you've come before us in the first place. So, um, I've said my, uh, my piece on, uh, on, on this, uh, on the truck issue in particular.
And understand, my alarm is going off, hold on. My wife's cooking, she's a great cook, but sometimes this happens, whole time.
Is that, is that the tea kettle? Nine thirty tea?
It's a fire alarm.
I thought it was, it's a fire alarm, I thought it was a phone alarm.
Sorry, you there? Sorry about that. So anyway, no.
How'd you silence so fast?
Uh, because I, I see her waving a towel at the fire.
It takes a long time for us to get rid of that.
Yeah, no, she's like, she's like, you know, standing the flames and then the, and the fire alarm, so.
Just please, if you, if you are in any danger, leave, leave right now, it's not that important.
No, but it is. But anyway, no, to your point, Mr. Nevesek, we, we will look at and confirm the truck. Again, we, we want to obviously, you know, work on something that's obviously amenable to the town, so we, we will look at alternatives. Again, I was just in the process of trying to get some answers for you, uh, right now, but again, we will confirm that. But again, we would be amenable, again, it's just a question of trips, so if it's, whether it's 12, six, or whatever the number is, we'll, we'll look into that and we'll definitely, um, obviously, uh, discuss that in the next meeting. But again, my point was simply going back, you know, I, I get these are, hopefully would seem to be side element issues that we can address as we go through the planning process, that, that was all.
So, the one issue we didn't discuss or haven't really gotten to yet is the aesthetics of the building and what the ARB is going to do to it. And if we'll be able to come up with a building that's more pleasing to the character of the neighborhood, if there is one here. And usually, I would think, before we go to the next step, I'd like to be assured that it could be done. I mean, right now, it's, it's an okay building. I think with a little more work, it could fit into the character and not have an impact on the character of the, of the neighborhood. Um, I mean, if it were a steel car gate warehouse type building, obviously, we'd put the brakes on right now, but I think there's opportunities here to, to make this more appealing. I'd like to defer to our architect on the board and ask him if he thinks that that could be achieved, such that we could vote appropriately tonight, or is it something we should hold on and wait to see what they've come up with?
We have it. You know, I, I think with, with, you know, our recommendation to the, uh, to the ARB, um, they would certainly, uh, look closely at it. I think there is plenty of opportunity, um, you know, with alignments of, of windows and, and doors beneath, uh, where they can sort of minimize the scale of the structure by incorporating some sort of a gable feature, um, just to bring it back down to, to earth, for lack of better terms. You know, I, I, I just think the geometric form or the square, the square massing that we have right now, rectangular massing, just isn't reflective of what's going on around the community, and also, I would even look across the street at, at Leewood, at the building there for, for some sort of inspiration. Because I think, um, you know, these two buildings should probably speak to one another as well.
And, and you know what, to, to that point, we, we have this evening, just so if you want to take a look, we do have an elevation that we've, uh, prepared just to share with you, just to give you, uh, another look at, uh, a rendering of a building, so, Joe, if you could pull that up? There you go.
There we go.
There you go.
Another one.
There you go.
Hey? We heard you, we heard you, we, we're listening, you know, fire alarms and all, we're listening, so.
No, and I appreciate that.
You just need to get rid of the louvers and the garage door. That may be, that may be.
Something, something so simple like that, like a, a, a very simple projection off of the, off of the building, um, using different shape as you have that sort of, uh, I, I guess you would call it like an English, an English manner parapet gable. Uh, something like that just gives it more character. And I think it would be received well by the community, um. Uh, you know, I have, I have no opposition to that.
Okay, so I have faith that we'll get there.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, but, yeah, yeah, but I think, I think we could work that out.
Yeah.
All right, so, that being said, Margaret, do we have anything else or? Oh, public hearing, holy jeez. I haven't even started, I haven't even started.
It's going to be another two.
All right, sorry, I forgot we have a public, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Mark's wife has it.
All right, so, uh, Rob, you'll, you're over there?
I, yeah, we're still in screen sharing, I have to.
Okay, cool, so, let's go to the public and see if there's any comments on this.
Uh, yeah. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Just use the raise your hand feature.
I can see who's, uh, participating, and they're all applicants at this point.
Okay, uh, so, Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that there are any members of the public, uh, offering a comment.
They should come by and see this, this is part of the community here.
Yeah, I don't think there's many folks that notice buildings going off.
Yeah, I said it's someone tonight.
That's really what it comes down to.
I think it is.
You know, notifying people.
I have received some, um, phone calls from neighbors, so I, I know there are some people in the neighborhood that are aware of it, um, and, and are aware that it's posted, the application is posted online.
Okay.
All right, so we leave the hearing open, and so gentlemen, is there any other issues you'd like to discuss before we go to the, to the, um, motion about the neg deck?
I just want to make one quick comment, it's just a administrative comment. At the last meeting, I believe it was, you declared your intent to be lead agency for the coordinated review of the application, which would mean that you would make the negative declaration, but the zoning board would not need to do that. Um, for a variety of reasons, we've just, I've decided just to do an uncoordinated review, which means you'll do a negative deck and the, and this is what you typically do. The zoning board will do a negative declaration as well, so they'll look at some of the environmental issues as well, um, and also rely on the reports from uh, Phil and Joe, but that's why in your resolution, um, I reference the uncoordinated review, and I just want to clarify that.
I just.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
I just, I have one more comment about, you know, about environmental impacts, like, we really have had no data or anything on uh, any noise levels that'll be coming out of this building, or any of the, uh, you know, impact of the chemicals and anything else that are in the building, so I, I don't know if the town has done, you know, or gotten data on that.
No, what we've received is what you've received, because, so that, that's what you're evaluating, I do know that the applicant addressed those concerns in writing, they didn't provide specific data. Um, so, but they did address the concerns with regard to noise and with regard to quote hazardous materials.
But they also addressed the odor, didn't they? I remember reading.
By saying that there would not be an odor.
There would not be any, correct. I imagine, is that technical or? There is no odor. Is that sort of what we're being told? Fine, and as far as noise goes, I think the comment might have been that the emergency generator is there too, and it's really no different than that, or maybe?
I, I believe they said it would meet the town's requirement for a maximum of 65 decibels at the property, um, line. And that it would be tested once a month, and again, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
And I also think it was compared to the facility on California Road, where we have not received complaints about odors or noise.
Is the, is the same, um, system in a facility on California Road?
It, there is a sim- a similar system, it's smaller, the California Road has a lot of other things going on on it, um, compared to this facility, but, um, but it does have a similar system that we are putting in.
Okay.
So, it's chlorine, you guys are adding to the water, is that correct, or is it?
Yes.
So you're producing chlorine with the chemicals that you bring in, the salt or whatever the chemical.
Yeah, saltwater and electricity, and we're making a very low strength chlorine solution.
Right, so is that like in a closed system when you make that?
It is.
It's closed, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it isn't, is almost odorless, or indeed it is, and the reason is because it's closed, right?
It, it's, it is odorless, yeah, there really isn't any odor that, that comes off the system.
All right, so, anyone has a comment about odor, it just doesn't work, right? Okay, not here, I'm saying in general, it seems reasonable to say that. Okay, good, so, let me move forward, so then I'm going to make the motion, guys. I make a motion to adapt a negative declaration for the uncoordinated secret review of application 19 dash 42, and to refer the application to the ZBA for consideration of what area variance is.
And, and a used variance as well.
Used variance.
And used variances. Good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, so, now that you guys are moving forward, I have, uh, lots of goodwill that you're going to do everything to keep us, uh, keep us happy here. Because we've discussed a lot of things, and I think there's opportunities to, to actually just make this even nicer and a little bit of less an impact on the neighborhood. But it's very nice that you've gotten this, and thank you for bearing this, because you knew we were going to ask, right?
Of course. Thank you, thank you, thank you all very much, enjoy the rest of the week, enjoy the July 4th, and thank you.
I'll see you, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Margaret, do we, do we have to do anything to change this from coordinated to uncoordinated, or, or did we just accomplish that? Okay, we just did, okay.
CPA does the coordinated. Someday I'll ask Margaret the difference. Not now, please. Uh, so next, next application is actually three applications.
It's four.
Yeah, four.
Four, four applications.
All right, so then it's 19 dash 49, 1, 2, 3, 4, and that addresses 1, 3, 5, and secu- and 7, Ruggliano Way, consecutively. Great.
And Michael, you'll just need to, oh, there you go, okay.
Did you, uh, did you brief, you did brief Mike on how we're going to do this, right?
Yes, and I'll just remind all of you, so you've already reviewed and approved this in 2017, and it went before the AR, there were four new homes that went before the architectural review board were reviewed, there were minor modifications made, then it went to the planning board, it was reviewed, um, and, and, um, approved. And it's simply because those approvals expired that the applicant's having to come back before the board again. And, um, it did go back before the ARB, uh, last month or so, and the ARB reviewed and approved the applications as submitted without any recommendations for changes. And, um, the only thing that has changed since you last saw it in 2017 is that the Joe Tramelli signed off on the stormwater management plan. Last time it was a condition of approval that that stormwater management plan be further reviewed and approved, but, um, in, in the interim, that's occurred. So I had asked, um, Michael, just to quickly show you the building elevations and the site plans for each of the four residents. If you have any questions about each of them, I would do it immediately after you hear, you know, that particular presentation. But then I think we can just open the public hearing up at the end and address all four of the homes.
Right, with the intent being, we've seen this before, we're seeing it again, but it's, uh, should be relatively easy to get through.
Yeah, because you, you've already reviewed and approved it.
We should make Louis, uh, take special notes on this, since he didn't see it the previous time. So, Mark and Jim and I can sort of hang back and let Louis handle all the questioning, all right?
I'm sure he'll just.
It's all yours, Louis.
Come on.
Let's go to, let's go to night.
Might want to go ahead?
Absolutely, well, good evening, everyone, uh, thanks for, uh, hearing my applications this evening. I'm going to try to make it short and sweet, Margaret did a great, um, introduction for me. Uh, as she said, we're just looking for another approval, or I guess, reapproving what was already approved. Uh, we did receive ARB approval back in February, um, for this project a second time. Um, and now we're here before you, just to kind of remind you what the project was. Um, refresh your memory, and then answer any questions that I can. Uh, I'm going to share my screen and just kind of walk through the plans just very quickly, as far as the elevations go, the renderings. Uh, you might be able to see them over my shoulder. Um, I have, I figured, uh, it might make it a little bit easier, but it's still a little difficult to see. But I'm going to share my screen now, and I'll walk you through, and please ask me questions, um, as you want, but I'm going to go pretty quickly, I don't want to keep you here too long. Um, but I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
So. I apologize, I'm, I'm new to this, I'm, I got the hang of it, I'm pretty good, but, uh, I just want to make sure I can show you what needs to be shown. Um, so the project is a four lot subdivision off of Water Street, um, just north, uh, I'm sorry, I, uh, Stewart, so it's just north of Stewart, um, in the orientation that this drawing is shown. Uh, the road is now known as Ruggliano Way. Um, the houses have received numbers. Uh, we were numbering them 1, 2, 3, 4, basically coming around the cul-de-sac, uh, in a clockwise fashion, but they've been numbered 1, 3, 5, and 7. Uh, so the project you're looking at right here is, is number one. Um, basically, this lot is two and a half times what is normally required in an R5 zone, just to kind of put it in perspective and remind you of where we're at. I'm going to quickly just go through, again, the elevations. And any questions that you might have, please ask. Um, this house is, um, two, is two and a half stories, uh, it, the garage enters from the left-hand side of this front elevation, if you look over at that elevation right there, uh, that's coming off of Water Street. Um, the, the intention is to use the grade change in the elevations to be able to get in and out of the project very easily, without having to add a bunch more, uh, impervious surface driveways, uh, retaining walls, things of that nature. Um, so I will just kind of pan around quickly to show you the rear elevation of the house, and then the right-hand side. Uh, the house, as far as materials, I, I'll just go through them quick, it's going to be stucco. Uh, it'll be gray in color, the, uh, there's going to be stone across the base at the staircase, um, and in spots across the front, if I remember correctly. Uh, yes, across the front, um, of the house, it's going to be square cut, it's gray in coloring, so the house is very gray and white. Very popular with what's on the market today. We wanted to try to appeal to as many buyers as possible, uh, and at the same time, keep the same look that you'll see driving down every street, um, in Eastchester. Uh, the front door will be black, all the trim is going to be white AZEC, and we'll have a gray roof. Um, there'll be a clope stained garage door for a little character, being that that is the biggest elevation on the house. I wanted to break it up a little bit with that bump out, and also with the garage, and basically set it off, um, from what happens and recedes behind it. Um, I'm going to keep going, if that's okay, unless you have any questions with this particular drawing.
Uh, just, what's the, uh, material for the building?
Um, I'll pull up a rendering, it might show it to you a little bit better.
Stucco.
Yeah, so it's going to be a stucco, um, and gray square cut stone across the base. Would it be easier for me to show you the renderings, or would you like me to go through the plans the way I just did?
Uh.
Rendering is fine.
Renderings, okay. Um, so this is, this is lot one, the first house on the left as you get into the property. The next house, again, as we're coming around the cul-de-sac now clockwise, is now known as house number three, um, which as you can see is, is once again, a farmhouse colonial. Um, I'll, I'll talk to you just about the materials, all of these houses, by the way, are on oversized lots. Um, basically, we had larger setbacks, uh, because it was a set, um, subdivision. Uh, we held, I believe it was 10 feet to the side yards. I'm sorry, I might be confusing my numbers, but our setbacks were a little bit larger, we were holding R10 setbacks, uh, for the project. Um, so they're oversized lots, but still R5 sized. Um, so they're oversized lots, but still R-five sized. Um, so the project, you know, it, a lot of properties, smaller houses. Uh, this this particular house, um, is gonna be hardy board, uh, Navajo beige is the color that we're looking to put, um, on it. We're gonna stucco, all the stucco on all the projects will be gray, and there's a common theme, so this way we can keep that same color scheme go going throughout the entire project. Um, the front door is gonna be black, we're doing a gray roof on this one, it's a little bit of a darker gray. Um, it's a gaff roof, uh, we're doing a white clope garage door, and all the fixtures will be black. Um. I'm, again, I'm just gonna keep going through them, unless you guys have questions, please stop me.
One one comment, well, two.
Sure.
Comments. Um, one of, uh, one is the front door, and I guess what's next to it is a panel down below, and a double hung, alright, is that it?
Let me just go back to it.
Under the portico. And then also, the second comment is the the window that's up in the gable. I would just, I I.
So.
I would bring that down probably about eighteen to twenty-four inches.
So what you're looking at are all, these are comments that were actually made by the ARBM, the Planning Board, in our last uh, revision set, they wanted to see more of a panelized look above the garage door and below the double-hunged window next to the door. Um, they wanted a little more detail, the reason the window, um, in the gable is where it is is because it's set up off of the floor in the attic. Um, that was a vent at one time, and it was asked, it was, um, asked of us to make it a window. So my thought was to engage the upper trim into the sub-rake and trim out that entire, uh, upper gable. I just think it's it's a nicer detail and a nicer way to finish it than just kind of float it in the middle of the gable end. And it'll also bring it much closer to the floor in the attic, which I I really didn't wanna do. It gives it more proportion between that and the double window below it. I hope that answers your question.
That's fine.
Okay, should I go on, or do you wanna look at it a little more?
No, you keep going.
Okay. So the next house is five Wrigleyana Way, it is, um, the third house on the left as you come up the cul-de-sac. This house is pays homage more to the Tudor-style coloring.
You changed, yeah, hold on, I don't think you're, uh, I don't have five up yet, do you guys see it?
Sorry.
Yeah, I see it.
I see it.
Oh, that's weird, alright, keep going, just a show up here. That is, yeah, it is now, there you go.
So this, this house, I I guess it's, I should say, most of these houses, the houses range in size from twenty-three hundred square feet up to twenty-six hundred. Um, so they they're not massive houses as per, I guess, what that lot size would actually accommodate in an R-ten. Um, but this house is gonna be stuccoed, beige, uh, we're gonna have, um, stuck, the stucco here will also be beige, the windows are going to be beige. Um, that was actually a change that we had made this year. Uh, we had originally had the the trim on this color house is white, and it wasn't picked up, not by myself, and not by the boards. Um, but once I did this rendering, and I had all that trim work and the rake boards and the sub-rakes, and I'm sorry, the fascias and the sub-fascias, all, uh, dressed up and dressed in white, it just didn't look right. So we decided to make them beige to keep with the look that you see here, I think it's much better, much more appropriate. Um, all of our trim will be AZEC, it'll be painted to match. Uh, the front door here will be red because I wanted to set off from all of the beige, I think it makes a nice contrast with the weathered wood roof, um, which is more of a brown color. Uh, we're doing a stained mahogany clope door. Uh, the rendering is a little bit more brownish, but it actually leaned more to a red, uh, to tie in more with the front door. And any fixtures that are seen, which are specifically in the back of the house, um, will be bronze, a rubbed oil bronze to match more, uh, with the coloring of this particular scheme. Um, when, I'm gonna actually show you a drawing of, let's see, I'm sorry, um, of all three houses side by side to one another, and try to explain away the roof lines just very quickly. And I apologize, I, uh, have it in another folder. This is my first time zooming, so I apologize if I'm a little slower than most.
Hey, you're doing well.
Um, but this is, this is a streetscape, basically showing lot one on the left, three, five, and then seven, so as we're coming around the cul-de-sac, just to show you the height relations from one house to the next. Um, lot one happens to be the lowest, um, house in the entire project, and the one closest to Water Street, and yet we're able to put a driveway under it, so you can see from Water Street up to lot three, there is a pretty good slope in there, I would say it's somewhere in the ten-foot range. Uh, but the houses are all within six feet of one another, I think the greatest, um, difference is right here, s- six foot eleven inches. The rest are, you'll hold one sec, bear with me. Um, two foot eleven is the difference between this house here and this one, and eleven inches between these two, I'm sorry, five and a quarter inches between these two guys. The idea was to make this a hip roof, so as you're coming around the project, and you can see it pretty much here, the hip roof will actually lend itself to creating more airspace between the two houses, and actually make it feel like there's more space, you know, beyond the second floor, so they're not cramping up onto one another. So I was trying to play with architectural features to make the houses look even further away from one another, um, even though they really, they really aren't, I mean, setbacks are still quite considerable. Um, I'm gonna jump back to seven Wrigleyana Way, just to go through that very quickly, and then I'll answer any questions you have. So seven is more of your traditional home, I think every other house in Eastchester pretty much looks like this these days. Um, it's got your typical portico at the front of the house, it's a two-story colonial, um, with a bumped-out bay in the front. Uh, it also has this bay window to break up the mass right here at the garage, which goes underneath the, uh, the house, as you come around the property now, it starts to drop off again, going back towards Water Street. So, once again, without changing any of the grades or any of the elevations almost that are there, uh, we were able to tuck the garage underneath and not have to create a bigger footprint, um, to the building itself. Uh, again, this house is twenty-four hundred square feet, so it's not a monstrous house. Uh, and we still managed to get every amenity in there that you can get, um, in in today's houses. And that detail, again, with the window up at the top of the gable, you know, just kind of tying those similar elements in and through, the same color roofs, um, similar color roofs, the gray stuccos, uh, the beige siding here to match more with the beige stucco next door. So a lot of just tying together of colors and, uh, shapes. So I really don't have much more, um, again, I, it was just a a quick reminder of what you guys approved, and I'm happy to answer any questions, I believe you have the plans in front of you, if there's anything you wanna see, I'm happy to, um, answer. I'll I'll send it back to you guys.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation and for the speed at which you gave it. Um, yeah, and thank you for the idea of using the renderings, and whoever approved that. Um, so, uh, let me say, I have no comments, I, maybe I remember these from last time, but, uh, they're very well done, they're handsome homes.
Thank you.
Very, good work.
Thank you.
Guys? Okay.
Seen it before, and it still looks good.
Still looks good.
Yeah.
Looks better tonight, yep, okay, so then we'll do the public hearing. Uh, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on these applications, one, four, dash, four, nine, uh, one, three, five, and seven, Wrigleyana Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're down to two applicants and Mr. King.
Mr. King, proceed. Does that have any comments, okay? Uh, okay, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on these applications, one, four, uh, one, nine, dash, four, nine, one, two, three, four, one, three, five, and seven, Wrigleyana Way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh.
So we'll just keep going, so I make a motion to approve the applications, one, nine, dash, four, nine, one, three, four, and.
And two.
One, two.
Oh, yeah, two, one, two, three, and four, thank you.
Always had a bad count from.
Yeah.
That's that's one, three, five, and seven.
One, three, five, and seven.
Wrigleyana Way, respect.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And two, Jim, thank you, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, man, thank you all very much, happy holidays, and, uh, stay safe, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, stay safe.
Take care. Bye-bye, all.
Bye-bye.
Uh, yeah, I didn't say anything about the landscape architect, Margaret. But that's a condition.
Oh, oh.
About the landscape.
Yeah, I'll I'll talk to Michael about that, he's he's aware of those, those were part of the previous, um, approval, and I'm sorry, I was uh, negligent on that, too.
No, you weren't, Margaret.
And then also, so we'll have our typical condition with regard to the landscape architect signing off on the landscaping, and also the only thing Joe Tramelli's most recent memo said was that the, um, test holes should be done on each individual property prior to the issuance of the building permit, oh, Michael, you're still here.
I'm still with you.
Yeah, okay, so so we'll add those two conditions, did you hear those?
I I did, I'm sorry to interject, I know we we closed the public hearing and all, but, uh, the landscape plans were all approved, Anthony Zaino was our landscape architect.
Yes, so, so.
Were filed.
Yes, so what the condition is that they, it's, the 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 plans are fine, the the condition is that, um, after the, after they're implemented, then he has to send a letter to the building department verifying that they've been implemented according to the approved plans.
Absolutely.
Then, um, according to Joe Tramelli's memo, soil testing on each lot must be coordinated with the town engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit, so those will be the two conditions for each house.
Yeah, I I actually spoke with Joe Tramelli, actually, I believe the engineer spoke with him, and I spoke with the engineer. Uh, he did mention that to us, but he said that shouldn't hold up the building permit, make it a condition of, and then we can follow up with the building department, so we are aware of that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Good, thank you again.
Thanks again, all, stay safe.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next application is twenty, dash, ten, one hundred Johnson Road.
Guys, I have to step away for one second, but you're in my ear, so I hear you, okay?
Okay. And, uh. Let's see, we're waiting for Adamo, here he comes, there he is, okay.
Right.
Look at his background.
There you go, that's the house. Alrighty, yeah, so yeah, good evening, board members, chairman, uh, nice to see everybody again. My name is Adamo Mayarano from Community Designs and Engineering, and we are proposing addition and additions and alterations to one hundred Johnson Road. I'm gonna share my screen, so you could see in the back, but.
Like your background.
Pretty much, yeah, thank you. Okay, so, can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so, as I was saying, uh, the house, one hundred Johnson Road, the house is, as it exists today, it's situated on the front right corner of the lot, it's in a R-five zoning district. Uh, maybe considered almost like a tiny home, it's around eight hundred square feet. Uh, what we are proposing essentially in the front is a attached one-car garage with a room above, that's basically a dormer, and the bulk of the addition will take place in the rear of the residence. Uh, it'd be a two-story addition towards the rear with a proposed deck off of the first floor, and the property slopes down, so with the the grade change, the back basement, eh, today, it it does, uh, have a walkout basement, but we'll be extending that basement and create another walkout basement to the patio area in the rear, along with some site, uh, alterations, extending the driveway in the front as well to fit, you know, two-car access. I'm gonna go to the elevations. Okay, so, yeah, so as I was mentioning, the house is gonna receive all-new finishes throughout. The siding will be white, hardy plank siding, uh, the stone, as what you see there today, if you could see from the pictures, it's actually a stuccoed stone, so we're gonna be removing that, putting in new real thin stone veneer on the front, uh, right side of the first floor, and the water table along the garage, um, along with the AZEC, uh, white, uh, soffits, finishes, trim, uh, the door and the the front door and the garage door will be as depicted, they'll be, uh, black doors, and to match the accent of the Anderson Black Windows, and the, as well as the simulated by the light, there'll be, says what is shown in the elevation, the four-over-one, uh, pattern. The rest of the house, um, will have the same finishes throughout, the roof will be a new, uh, architectural asphalt shingle roof, it's a charcoal color, and the black, the black railing and the deck in the back is a PVC railing, which will pick up the accents of the, uh, black as well with the white. Um, we go to now, as far as the, uh, lighting is concerned, we're gonna have, uh, typical sconce lightings on the front door, barn-style lighting on the garage door, and as well as the back, uh, door as well in the basement, and then soffit light in the, uh, first floor, uh, door into the deck in the rear.
Hey, before you, before you move on, could you just, uh, is the stone at the water table different than the stone on the, by, around the entrance, or?
It's all gonna match, it's the same stone, uh.
Okay.
Zoom in here, but. Yeah, so that's the.
That's the.
Natural sort of pattern color, uh, if you see today, it does look like it has some stone on, actually, I'll go to the pictures, but, so that's gonna be, the existing stone's gonna be removed because it's just the stucco fake, uh, stone veneer.
Oh, they just stamped it or something.
Exactly, you could sort of see it maybe in that picture there, it's gonna, it's fake stone, well, it's actually not stone, it's stucco, it's gonna be removed, and we're gonna put the same stone on the front and the, uh, garage water table. Also, if you see in that picture, the front, uh, portico, we're gonna switch that up to a sort of enclosed it or something, so we're gonna renovate that and make it more of a true open portico with columns and similar roof to match the gable that we're proposing above the garage.
Looks right good.
Um, and then, yeah, just basically in streetscape, it sort of also gives it that more of a that the house as it is today kind of stands out, and the addition will kind of help tie it in with the neighborhood, with the garage, and the addition, similar to what the neighboring residences, you could see throughout the neighborhood, sort of helps it blend in, so to speak. Um, and yeah, uh, that's pretty much it in the nutshell, and then, uh, just site features, uh, the condensers, the proposed new condensers just be located in the rear underneath the deck, uh, the proposed deck, and as well as site drainage, we'll be doing, you know, new site drainage for the added impervious area with cold tech units in the rear and front to tie in to the, uh, new driveway and the front portion of the house as well. Yeah.
Okay, very nice, thank you. Uh. Comments? Yep, good, uh, so Margaret, is there any, uh, is there any comments about the, um, drainage that have to be made or everything, it's already, it works?
No, you know, for, um, new construction, we look at, that we have, uh, Joe Tramelli look at that, for additions and alterations, we review that in h- house, but but that's always, uh, requirements, our plan reviewer ensures that the stormwater management is being handled properly.
Adequately, okay, good. So then I'll open the public hearing, I make an, a motion to open the public hearing on application two zero, dash, one zero, one hundred Johnson Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's still.
And I don't see anyone raising their hands at this time, uh, to offer a comment, if anyone does, uh, please raise your hand, and I'll, uh, I'll invite you to unmute yourself.
It's the best applicant, Mr. King.
That's right.
So then, um, so then I make a motion to close the public hearing on application two zero, one zero, one hundred Johnson Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's so well done that even if we had more time, I wouldn't have anything to say, so.
Yeah, I I I just wanted to add as a, as a compliment that, uh, that that it looks, the house, the photograph of the house that that is showing on the screen here, looks like something's missing from it. And you've supplied that missing piece. It wa- it looks off balance, it's 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 towards the edge of the property, and 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 by adding the the garage and the, uh, and and the the space above it, the the second floor, it actually looks like you filled out the house to what it's supposed to look like, so.
Yeah, great, great-looking house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it was successful, and also in keeping with the makeup of the neighborhood in terms of the massing and the width of the homes on either side of the street, across the street. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of what we looked at in the front to create more of a roof in the front of the addition, so it brings it, you know, not so it's a big-scale home compared to the others.
And thank you for the presentation as well, showing the streetscape on it, that's that's quite helpful, um, for for our analysis. So appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, we're a tough crowd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. You got it.
So last application is two, zero, dash, one, four, ninety-five Parkway Circle.
You closed the public hearing. You didn't have to approve that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we closed the public.
We closed the public hearing and then we commented, but we didn't.
Okay, good.
Just telling you.
So I make a motion, that was the end. I make a motion to approve the application to your one, zero, one hundred Johnson Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. That's who we're here for.
Thank you again. Alright. You got it. Have a great summer. Alright.
So I already said what the last application is, so.
Okay. Okay, he's coming.
He covered a ten o'clock slot, right?
Oh, is that what I was saying? Number ten, okay. Sorry, guys, jumped on there.
This is my nap.
It's my dinner.
There you are.
Hello.
There, how are you?
Hello? Am I muted?
Nope, you're fine.
We got you.
So yours.
Fine. Okay, where do I start? They had a proposed an additional duration.
Could you just show us who you are?
Anthony Gisso.
There you go.
A and R Property Ventures.
Okay.
Hello. Hopefully you're looking at what I'm looking at?
Yes, looking at the elevations.
Yes. Okay, so is the existing elevation on the bottom right of what the house looks like? And we propose a two-story addition above it, second floor addition, I should say, raising the roof line. And a two-car garage off to the left, but also two bedrooms above it.
There we are.
I'm just trying to go to the public, he's a, can't hear him.
Oh, yes, it is.
Any questions?
Yeah, could you just tell us something about the finishes?
The finish is going to be a hardy board, beige. The roof was weatherwood. Asphalt shingle, GAF thirty-year. Anderson windows. Four hundred series.
The front door and garage doors, what color are they? And all the trim?
Brown, stained brown. And the trim is all going to be white, AZAC.
Sure. Is there a site plan?
Yes.
So all of the walkways are the same as existing? Not touching any of that?
Yes, we're, we're going to end up putting new even stones down.
Okay.
Well, new black top.
Right, so it seems like there's no change to the impervious?
No. Well, there is a little on the left side.
The garage is getting a little bigger, right?
Yeah, correct. Getting rid of the breezeway and extending it over.
Got it.
You can see it up on the top, right? It's probably like, I don't know, five feet wider, and then it goes back five feet.
Okay. We, right, we're used to looking at, it takes us a while to wrap our heads around something in black and white, so we apologize.
It's okay.
Guys, any questions or comments? I understand it. Just trying to get, go back to the elevation and run through the colors again. The Hardy Boy plank is, just to go through the colors one more time.
Beige.
Beige, got it. Roof is weatherwood, is that what you said? That's like a brownish?
Yeah.
Right, white, white trim.
Windows are white, right?
Right.
Windows are white.
Those are white. Gutters are white, I guess, right?
Yep. Leaders white.
Right, and then.
What are you doing with the garage doors?
The insulated metal wood, well, look like wood.
Right. It's going to be white or, you know, it'll be like a faux stain color, white?
No, stain color.
Stain?
Yeah, to match the door.
Did the, did the ARB, I'm sorry, it finished the colors, so that's, and the front door is the same color?
Correct.
Got it. The columns?
White.
White, good. Did the ARB, they just went to the ARB? They didn't have any comments on it?
They did have comments. I can go over those quickly and Anthony. So the first comment was to consider a solid front door that was more consistent with what they said, a Dutch colonial style of the home. And so Anthony did change the style of the front door. They, let's see, they recommended a solid door with two side lights, and it looks like, Anthony, you, you kept the single side light.
Yeah, I kept the single side light. Because the roof, there's actually a closet on the right side. So in order to put another side light, I would lose the closet.
Right, you have to move the door over.
And then they asked that he provide a gable roof over the front portico, which he did. To hide the proposed leaders adjacent to the front portico, and they recommended that maybe they could hide them behind the columns. And I don't know if that was possible, but they did, he did bring them closer to the columns. Previously, they came straight down, sort of parallel to, to the columns, and they were more noticeable.
Right, he notched them.
And they, they actually asked him to consider replacing the bay window on the left side of the front door with just the double, double hung window to create a little more balance, but then he chose to add the, another bay window to create that balance. And that was it.
Are they the same size, those two windows, or the one on the right is smaller?
One on the right is actually just set back.
I see.
Right, it looks like it's just a little, yeah, a little bit, it's not as wide, yeah. But right, it is set back on the elevation.
So the shingles on top of all of the bay window, they all match what's on the roof?
Correct.
Obviously. They're not black, they're the same color?
Yes.
And the Hardy Boy in front of the gable by the front door is just, that's the same thing? That's vertical Hardy Boy?
Yeah, right.
Alright. I'm okay. Anything else, guys? Nope, so I make a motion to open the application on two, zero, one, four, ninety-five Parkway Circle. I'm sorry, right, open the public hearing. All in favor?
Second. Wait, wait.
I make a motion to open the public hearing, application two, zero, one, four, ninety-five Parkway Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At that time.
Mr. Chairman, it does not appear there's anyone wishing to offer a comment to the board.
Great. Same motion to close the public hearing on this application, two, zero, one, four, ninety-five Parkway Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Gisso, you're good to go, so I'll make a motion.
I'll approve it.
Yeah, I know. I'll make a motion. Skipped up again, huh? And make a motion to approve application two, zero, one, four, ninety-five Parkway Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And then, I think that's everything, right, Margaret?
That's everything. We have a special meeting scheduled for July twenty-first, which you said at the beginning of the meeting, but since that hasn't, wasn't previously posted, I just wanted to say that again.
Yeah.
Okay.
What day is that? It's Tuesday?
Tuesday, July twenty-first at seven o'clock. And most, I'm, I'm assuming it'll be a Zoom meeting again. We're actually only permitted to have remote meetings until July seventh, but I'm assuming that the governor will extend that, so.
Let's go. Thanks, everyone, for coming in for that meeting. I think we'll break in the logjam here. I saw there weren't very many applications on that one. Are there, Margaret?
No, it will not be a long agenda. It's just to wrap things up that are kind of in the pipeline or that got delayed because of the two meetings that you missed previously.
Yeah, it's what's on the back page of this, plus I guess the one that was adjourned.
Yeah, there, there may be one or two more, but, but at a minimum, what's on the agenda now.
Great, thank you. So I'll make a motion to close this, the Eastchester Planning Board meeting of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks, guys. Good night, guys. Take care.
Take care.